Good afternoon. I'd like to call the Human Resources, excuse me, I'm getting ready to start. I would like to call the Human Resource Committee to order. It is now 6:00 PM on April 8th, 2019, and we are at Nashville High School North. Can we have a roll call, please?
Okay, Ms. Timmons?
Yeah.
Mrs. Porter is here, Ms. Oden, Ms. O'Gara. We also have Mr. Kaufman, and Ms. Ohensy, and Ms. Scales.
Okay. You received on Friday personnel recommendations. We passed out additional recommendations with two added on, 11 and 12. Have you had a chance to overlook those things? Any questions on the personnel recommendation? Ms. Oden?
Moved to accept the revised personnel recommendations of April 8th, 2019.
Second.
Okay, all in favor? Aye.
Aye.
Okay, the personnel recommendation with the added on has been voted in, three to zero. Okay, next we have the Nashville Job Fair statistics. That was also in your packet. That job fair happened...
On April 2nd.
Uh huh. Ms. O'Gara, would you like to speak on it?
Sure, I'm looking for my pages. Can I borrow yours?
Sure.
So, you should have a double-sided sheet on the historical statistics and at the job fair on April 2nd. If you look at the one that is just a chart that compares how job fairs going back to 2011, how many people attended, and what the, which, from which subject area, certification areas, we were drawing in the job fair. The 2019 number is 180. We had three school psychs that somebody held on to the, their forms. So, the number for 2019 is actually 180, and includes those three psychs, school psychs. If you flip it over, it's kind, it's an analysis of when the job fair was scheduled, looking to see what are the best states to have the job fair, and down the bottom, everybody rates the candidates that attend, so we have the exceptionals should be interviewed maybe later. And as you can see, last year and this year, we had a good group of about 130 candidates that we should be interviewing out of the 180.
Okay, thank you. Any questions on the job fair statistics? Mr. Kaufman?
Thank you. Ms. O'Gara, I'm just curious, two questions. One is, do you also, is the job fair for substitute teachers as well, or you do those separately?
I do those sep, we do those separately. This is for our teachers, for positions for next year. We did hire, look for some long-term subs that we're currently looking for that have to be teacher certified, but it's really everybody in that bargaining unit, so we included school nurses and library media, and anybody in that group.
Okay, and I just looked year over year, your two ends. 2011, you had 354 candidates, and this last time, you're down to 177, 180. So, that's almost half.
Yes. We, but you could, if you look across at the numbers, you can see that there's been a decline in candidates. Really looking for, I, I think it's less people going into teaching, honestly.
So, you think it's generally a trend of fewer people going into teaching? It's not about the district? I don't think so.
I think it's fewer people going into teaching.
Okay, thank you. Now, did you advertise this in a bunch of places, I would imagine?
Oh, yes, we had it...
Maybe you could explain that, so people can appreciate the effort you put in.
So, we had it on Indeed, we had it on Monster, we had it in the Union Leader, in the Telegraph. We also had it, we went out to all the colleges in New Hampshire and Massachusetts in the surrounding area, and we sent them a flyer about our job fair. We had it in the Hippo, we had it on School Spring, we had it on EdJobs. We really blanketed, so...
No, thank you. I appreciate that. I think it's important for people to know just how much effort goes into producing one of these things. I know we increased your budget for advertising, and here's a way to explain where all that money went.
Yes.
Because I know, I expected you to answer the way you did, because I had, I recall what you've done in the past. So, thank you very much.
Thank you, Mr. Kaufman. I want to point something out as well. The unemployment rate in New Hampshire is 2.7. That alone would give us less candidates regardless. In the United States, the unemployment rate is 6.7. Hawaii and North Dakota is the only two states that's lower than us, and that contribute to our low turnout as well. So, it's not just the fact that we have teachers not going into teaching, it's the fact that the unemployment rate is low as well. So, I just want to point that out. Okay, any other questions? I'd like the board, the Human Resources Board, be without any sidebar, if you may.
I'm sorry, Ms. Timmons. I was asking Ms. Ohensy for a copy of the background investigation, not the policy, but I did not receive in my packet the information from the advisory or the law, which I had requested from the secretary. I don't know if she gave you a copy for me, so I was asking Ms. Ohensy, since I didn't receive it in my packet. I'm sorry.
All right, thank you.
Did you receive something from the board secretary for me?
No, I did not.
Okay, thank you.
I got probably the same thing you got in your packet.
I did not receive, I understand that Ms. Ohensy did. You're free to look at my packet. I did not receive either the state law, nor did I receive the advisory. That's why I requested it earlier today.
It was actually in the packet of March 25th, had the state law in it, and also the technical advisory.
Okay, so, it's not in this packet. This is where I would have read it. I'm sorry, I did not bring a previous packet with me.
Okay, thank you. Any other questions or concerns? Okay, the next thing we need to discuss is child abuse and neglect. That's Policy JLF. Do we have any questions on yet? Did you have a chance to read this?
May I, we, so this had already gone through the HR committee?
Yes.
And there was, I was asked to change the wordy paragraph having to do with the posting in the schools. And it is on the first page after the definitions of abandoned and sexually abused and physically injured. That has been changed to read simply, "Each school shall post a sign provided by DCYF or otherwise within the school that is readily accessible to students that contains the telephone number and the website address of the New Hampshire Division for Children, Youth, and Families to receive reports of child abuse or neglect."
Okay. Ms. Porter?
Okay, very good. Thank you. Very good.
It was very wordy before.
Yeah, no, good, good. Okay, I'm, on the paragraph that starts each report, I think it's the third down, can we just put a comma, "At each report shall, comma, if known, comma"?
It's on, I did it because there was so many red lines.
Okay.
On the copy that I accepted, I have, "Each report shall, comma"?
Shall.
If known, and another comma, after known.
If, if known, okay.
Yep. And then, the list there, I don't have any quarrel with the content, but is, that's a list, so they're listed as sentences, they're not complete sentences, so I don't know if we just need commas between those. So, "Shall contain" the name, age, address of the children being abused or neglected, comma, the name of the parent or comma, the nature, you see what I'm saying? It's kind of a list of things. Because the way it's listed, because you have...
They're listed as separate word, as sentences, in the accepted...
The name of the parent or caregiver responsible for the child's welfare is not...
I have a period at the end.
It's not a complete sentence.
It doesn't sound like a complete sentence.
Okay. So, you, do you, you want these all as commas?
I think that would be, because it is a series, right?
Okay.
Yeah.
Okay.
Thank you. I think that was it.
Ms. Porter, I'm sorry, Ms. Oden?
Thank you. Yes, I was looking in, I guess, the second paragraph. "Proof is not required to make a report. If you suspect that a child is being abused or neglected, New Hampshire law provides protection against civil or and." Shouldn't that be and/or?
Okay.
And the next paragraph, "On each report shall," the last sentence, "Any other information that may be helpful to the assessment"?
It probably should be or, "Any other information?", because we're putting commas in the...
Okay.
It's going to be an awful long sentence, but yeah.
Or, period, or.
Yeah.
Yep. That is a long sentence.
Okay, any other grammatical?
Ms. Timmons?
Yes, Mr. Kaufman?
Thank you. So, I have a question with the first paragraph. The last sentence talks about the superintendent or their designee must receive the report from the principal, but it doesn't specify any timeframe. Is this within three days, five days? What is typically, what is the response time to file one of these things?
So, the DCYF report is an immediate oral report that's made to DCYF, and in our process, it's immediately written up, and it's sent to the principals, to the principal, and then to the superintendent's office. So, it's an immediate, right after the DCYF report.
So, is it fair to say on the same day, or within 24 hours?
The maximum is 48 hours for DCYF to ask for a written report, but since we have DCYF, it's only concerns with their legalities beyond it. The Department of Ed has another layer where they're expecting that report to the superintendent, and the superintendent to the Department of Ed.
But what would the record, I, I'm suggesting we include a timeframe here. I think the 48 hours is not anywhere else, the DCYF limit you spoke to is not in that first paragraph. This says it must receive the report, but it doesn't say by when. So, I would recommend the committee add an appropriate time. I'm asking, is it 48 hours, or? I'm just suggesting we add something here.
In the first paragraph, it says, "The school employee who suspects that a child has been abused or neglected will make an oral report immediately to DCYF by telephone, and then notify the school principal that the report hasn't been made, and provide the principal with a written report. The written report will also be provided to DCYF if requested. The superintendent or his designee must receive the report from the principal."
And I'm just suggesting that some time limit be appropriately referenced. That's all. It says, "We'll provide the principal with a written report." Is that, it may be intended to be on the same day?
It's an immediate.
Immediate.
It's an immediate report.
This is, the next sentence, the last sentence, talks about when the superintendent must receive it. So, will, the principal may in fact send it right away, but they may not. I'm just trying to put a guideline here.
The principal will send it right away after making the report.
Great. Can we say that? Can we incorporate immediate throughout this?
I personally...
I don't get that.
I think that the immediate should be suffice. I don't think we should make it more cumbersome than what it is. So, the way it's written...
So, if I can continue?
Excuse me?
It's not clear to me that immediate applied to the last sentence. That's why I suggested that a timeframe be added. And I do have one additional, actually two additional comments. I'm not actually done yet.
And then, I'm telling you, that is cumbersome, and we don't necessarily need, we already got the word immediate. And if it's not clear to you, it's clear to me.
What does that mean, Ms. Timmons?
It means, please, we're going to continue on. We're not going to argue about this. You are not part of this committee, and I would not like you to...
Actually, I am. I'm, as a board member, I'm entitled to be here and express my feedback.
Mr. Kaufman, I'm going to end up letting you, suggesting you leave if you continue this. I'm telling you, we had a pretty good meeting without this constant interruption by you. So, I want you to, you know, make your suggestions, and then after that, we make the vote, not you.
Fine. May I continue?
Yes, sir, you may.
Thank you. So, if you continue down the second paragraph from the end, it, the proposal strikes, "The principal or administrator of each school shall post a sign," or whatever. The way it's worded here, there's no responsible person to take action. Each, each school shall post a sign provided by DCYF. I think the policy should be clear, as it was previously, who that person is, who is the responsible person at the school who will do this.
So, there's a variety of notices that have to be posted in each school building, like the EEOC posting that says that equal opportunity for all, the wage, the Department of Labor minimum wage, there's worker comp posting. There's many different postings that have to be posted in the superintendent's office in all the school buildings. And generally, the HR department puts together a package and sends it out to all the schools. So, actually, the, I've already called DCYF and asked about the posting, but we would send it out from HR to the schools to make sure, because we go through a regular check to make sure all our notices are up to date and they're not outdated. There's about 10 of them up there.
I understand. I recall the bulletin boards, and generally, there's a bulletin board or something. Who's responsible to ensure those postings get done?
They're sent to the principal's office, and then they put them up. We send them out, we say, here, here's all the new postings, the notices, please make sure that they're up. And then, the secretaries take down the old ones and put up the new ones.
So, to that end, I would suggest that the principal or their designee shall ensure that, you know, the signs are posted, or whatever. I just think, sending it over there is great. It goes to the principal, that's great, until I ask that question that was unknown to me. And I just think, if you're going to have a policy, and you're going to post a required notice, there should be some designated responsible person to ensure that it's done. That's all I'm saying. You can add it, or not. That's clearly up to the committee, but I did want to point that out. And then, on the next page, I'm confused why there's an extended quote here from ED 51101, "Grounds for denial of license for educator certification." And I don't, I mean, this policy is about child abuse and neglect. Granted, this may be one criteria for someone to be terminated, or, or at least have their credentials pulled, or something like that, but I don't believe that extended quote belongs in here. One of the things we've tried to do previously when we've done policies is cite the law or cite the ED regulations that are appropriate, but not include the text of them in our documents, because if they change, then that is more work for the board to update documents. So, I think it's adequate to refer to this. I don't know that you need this extended quote in here.
We do. It's not an extended quote. It's taken from education regulations, where Commissioner Etto Blue put in a code of conduct and a code of ethics which concerns student safety. If you look down on bullet point number four, that's the child abuse and neglect. And we reworded this policy to be the safety and well-being of students, because there has to be a place for all these other things that are happening. Furnishing alcohol or illegal unauthorized drugs to students, committing any of the following acts, that's the child abuse, soliciting or encouraging participation or romantic or sexual relation. Those are all part of the commissioners' educational regulations that come from the code of conduct and the code of ethics, and it's all concerning the safety of students in schools.
Okay. Didn't we as a board approve those? I know we received them, the code of conduct that came out in whatever it was, September, October, November. I know we received them. My, I don't recall if they were ever voted on. Did we ever make them a policy?
Don't get to vote on the...
No, but I mean, vote on them in the sense of accepting them in our policies or procedures.
We voted in, when we first brought this policy, those were all listed in there, and we explained it. So, it's, it's not a new add-on. It was in there. We felt it belonged in there. It belongs in our policy to reflect the commissioners' code of conduct and a code of ethics. The staff of the Nashville School District are held to these educational regulations, and it should be in a board policy, and the policy is corresponding to student safety.
Okay, so would that mean that the other codes of conduct references would need to be brought into relevant board policies?
These specific ones that are listed have to do with the student.
I understand that. So, I'm saying, there are other ones in that code of conduct that deal with how a credentialed person would deal with a parent. So, would we need to find those paragraphs and bring them, I'm asking for your recommendation?
No, because there's, the code of, yeah, the code of conduct is broken up into students, right? How we interact with students, the school community, and parents, and our colleagues. And so, what is in here is everything that has to do with keeping students safe.
I understand. I accept your premise, but I'm asking you a further question. Would you recommend the board for those other areas that you spoke of, to the community, to other teachers, to teacher, credentialed person to credentialed person? Should those codes of conduct that are specific to them find their way into board policies that are appropriate to that population? I'm just asking, because you're recommending we do it here for student safety. So, if I accept your premise that way, then I'm asking if those codes of conduct references should be placed into other policies as well. And I'm curious what your recommendation is.
If you were to place them in another board policy, they would fit nicely in our professional ethics policy. Because our professional ethics policy touches on those, most of those things.
Okay, so you think it would be worth the board to look at incorporating those things, perhaps in the professional ethics policy?
We could do that. It would go, it's a HR policy, so it would go through HR.
Okay, thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Kaufman. As we move along on the National Education Policy, which is JLF, can we have a motion to approve this incentive policy based on our recommendations of the grammatical errors?
I'm so moved.
Second?
Second.
Okay, okay. So, all in favor of moving this to the policy committee? Say aye.
Aye.
Okay, been voted, three to zero. It goes on to policy. The next one, oh, should, we rescind 4400?
Ms. Timmons, so the, the motion was to send it to policy, right?
Yes, to send it to policy after the correction.
I believe we should make a, have a vote to rescind 4400, the old child abuse and neglect policy.
Can I have a motion to rescind 4400, child abuse and neglect policy?
Potion, motion to rescind policy, what is it, 4400?
4400.
So, may I ask a question? Do we have to wait till the full more?
I think we should wait until we get to the...
Well, if it's going to policy, then...
Right, because it's going to policy from here.
No, no motion.
I withdraw that motion.
Okay, thank you. And also, GLF-r mandated reporting form that's attached to the child abuse and neglect would follow that document to policy as well.
Okay.
Okay? Now, Policy GBCD, Background Investigation and Criminal Check. Going to have a motion to send this to policy? Any questions?
Would you like me to, the, the only thing that we changed was, I believe, Ms. Oden and Ms. Porter had a conversation about including professional development consultants. So, if you look at the back page of the policy, in the first paragraph, we've added, "Any professional development consultants that are working with teachers in classroom during the school day are required to submit to a criminal background check."
Ms. Oden, do you remember, recall that?
Yes.
Yes, I do. Thank you. So, having said that, can I have a motion to send this over to policy?
I'm, I move that...
Going to have discussion? Are you just going to put the motion, are you going to discuss it first?
We had discussion last time on this thing, policy. You wasn't here. I'm not discussing it again.
You're not in compliance with state law?
Mr. Kaufman, we had discussion last...
I'm sorry, it's on the agenda for tonight for discussion. You included it in our packet. I'm here to discuss it, because it's on the agenda.
I'm not going to discuss this. We discussed it once, and that's it, and it's on the...
Obviously, not sufficiently, because you have it back on the agenda.
No, we only have it on the agenda, so we can approve it, because we discussed it at the last one. So, at our last HR committee, which you happen not to be here. So, we discussed it. We're not going to discuss it any further. There's a motion on the floor, and I need approval, second, on that.
Did you do that, Donnie?
Motion to approve policy GBCD as amended.
All right, second.
Okay, all in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Okay, GBCD, it's been approved, three to zero, to be forwarded to the policy committee. Thank you. The last policy is non-discrimination, and that's Policy AC. We didn't discuss that at the last meeting. Any discussion on this one? Let's vote them.
Would you like me to speak about it?
Yes.
So, we had a very brief policy on non-discrimination. The food service program receives federal funds from the U.S. Department of Agriculture. And the U.S. Department of Agriculture, in auditing our food service program, said we were very short of what needed to have, be on our discrimination policy. So, I wove it into what we have. There's... So I wove it into what we have, there's many, if you look down at the, if you go to the end, you will see there's a whole list of different RSAs and federal regulations that we have to comply with, including the US Department of Agriculture. So we simply stated all the protected classes under, all of those under the EEOC, the New Hampshire Commission for Human Rights, which is slightly different than the federal, and we incorporated, we incorporated the USDA language in there. And we also did not have a process, we had a process that everybody would come and report it to me, but we didn't talk about what happens next. So what happens is an investigation, much like what's outlined in the sexual harassment. And so I added that, and then I added all the places where you can bypass coming to me and going straight to a state or federal agency with a complaint, which is required for all of them. But it's really the food service program that prompted us to get this more on par.
Ms. Porter?
Okay, can I just wordsmith a little bit in the first read paragraph? So I'm just gonna read straight through and tell the changes as I come, okay? "In accordance with state, federal," right? Okay, I'm gonna start with the red part, just the red part.
Okay, just to clarify it, okay.
Sorry, okay. "In accordance with state, federal, and USDA regulations and policies, comma, institutions participating in or administrating USDA program."
So the policy-
Wait a second, let me read this again, I read this 10 times.
The policy's going with the USDA language?
Right, no, and I took it right from there, because the, the way it's written, it doesn't make, let me think. "In accordance with state, federal, and USDA regulations and policies, comma, institutions participating in or administrating USDA programs are prohibited from discrimination based on all of those things."
Uh huh.
Right? Then I'm s-
I don't think there's a comma that belongs there?
Okay, maybe not the comma, but take out, oh God. "In accordance with state, federal, and USDA regulations and policies-"
And policies for institutions.
"-for institutions participating in or administrating USDA, USDA programs."
Okay.
No, I think I-
The or out?
I think I took out the four.
The four.
Yeah, take out the four, I should have made a-
No, you can't, because it's, it can then, they can be exclusive of each other?
State, federal, and USDA policies.
In or-
All right, so if we just do participating in or administrating, so those institutions are prohibited from discrimination, I think you need an in or, does that make sense? I went back and forth with this from the-
I think it's in or, participating in or administering USDA programs.
Okay, okay.
Comma.
Yep.
Are prohibited.
Okay, then, in that same paragraph, going down the third line from the bottom, incomes, income derived from a public assistance, not assistant.
Yep, sorry.
That's okay. And then, "Being a victim of domestic violence, political beliefs, or reprisal," I think I changed that, how was it in the, I didn't make good notes, yes, because in the law, right over here, it says-
Political, so political beliefs and then, no, for the last one, it's two different things, right?
Yes, political beliefs or reprisal, or retaliation, I took it right from the law on the back. Took it from here.
Okay.
That's it. Okay, very good.
Mr. Guarino?
Thank you, Madam Chair, I just have a quick question. On the one, two, three, fourth paragraph, you talk about the five, the school 504 coordinator. Do people know where to go to find their 504 coordinator, is that like the principals of each school, or is there a list somewhere?
I believe it's either the assistant principal, or the guidance person is a 504 coordinator, so they would go to the school's office.
Okay.
Thank you, any other questions? Okay, are you done with this?
I am.
You are, okay.
Do you want to send it to policy?
Policy, yes.
All right.
So there's a motion, can I make a motion to send?
Are you doing it?
Good, you do it.
All right, motion to send policy AC to the policy committee?
With changes?
With changes.
With changes.
Yep.
Second.
Okay, so the motion is to send, did not discrimination AC to policy with changes, all in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
So that passed three to zero. Okay, any other discussions on HR? I just want to point out that we do have some interviews that's coming up, that's the principal for Pinnachuk, and we also interview him for the director of adult education and AP for Fairgrounds. So that's what's coming up now, so, after that, I have any other, any other news to give in the HR committee? Yes, Ms. Kaufman?
Thank you, I'd like to ask Ms. O'Gara about that position, the AP position from the high school. So we've had, over the last couple of years that I've been on the board, we've had over 25% turnover now for our principals and assistant principals. And I know I expressed this concern previously, just surprised to see this particular person leaving, just because I think I was here either right after she got the position, or was part of the committee, you know, the approval for it. I'm just concerned that's a huge turnover for such important positions, and what you thought about that?
I don't really have any thoughts on that.
Are you conducting exit interviews to find out why some of these people are leaving?
She's leaving because she was offered another position in another district.
Okay, is that the case through most of the people that have left?
Yes. I think in any organization, culture and climate is a major factor in people leaving an organization. It's, it's across the board, I'm not just talking about here, us, but it is. Oftentimes, people say, "I went for more money," or "I wanted a change," but really, if you read any of the statistics, it really comes down to the culture and climate.
Is there any way for the exit interviews that you have conducted, that the board can see those, obviously not naming people, but I'd be curious to understand the reasons why people are giving why they're leaving?
So we do, it's a voluntary exit survey that we do, we can put that information together, we honestly, we don't get a lot, because it is voluntary, but we can put that together, but I think that will also come out in the, won't it also be in the survey for the district?
There's not a specific question for-
There is not a, no.
Yeah, but, but climate would certainly-
Yeah, we, we can put that together.
Thank you.
Okay, I want to point out that Ms. Bean Driver came in as well, so. At six, no, six thirty-five. Any other questions or concerns? If not, I request a motion to adjourn.
Move to adjourn.
Second.
Okay, all in favor?
Aye.
Okay, we adjourn at six forty.